नम्मियों रुद्र स्थिति करोगे कथावे अल्टीपुण्य सर्दित के आकारत को डरते परविदिमा गोड़ी पादतरीले उद्वार तेके के नागल वंदर कम्बलद कथावे पाडल मुलमाहे उद्वार तेन मुलमाहे गंगल बलपड़त्ता कदा आगमन नौकी पार्करो सत्तिरिविन्यास अंधकारक रीयल आगच्ची पुड़िविरागे एंगले स्वाधिनी मायुम्मियु वार्ते के के परसुत आवियानुडे वल्लनड़त्रे एंगले वल्लनड़त्ता मरिया आगवेंटिक लुगरो सहित गुरुद्र करुम्मिदा सने बलपड़त्ती रागे वंद ओवर वरी नी राजस्व रेखिरागे आण्ड ओर आये सुकृष्टिन्गले एरपट्टन नामतले दाल्मीयोड़ वेंटिक लुगरनाला पितावे अमीन
इन्हें पाठपुस्तकले मुजलाद पाडल नाम यशु के संदम मुजलाद पाडल पाडुवा
अवर मगिमयाली रुलयत्ते अवरी नीलपुगिरा उमारे निंद सायलाई अगील सातारिणवो मगिमय नीलैछल वंदलो यसु उदरुन परुवा आतिरप्पो पड़न निरवा मगिमय लिलितिरवा अरुगलो मक्किरा अवराज्य तेपुरिपो यसु विक्राज्य एंदो मुल्ले दिन मगिमय आली रेंददे ये क्रेवरी सब्जिलारे इवरे वोली आय कंतदे कर्त्ती सारे नम्मे कुदिगले पारिणवो
पदिनेट पदिनेट्टाम पाडल पाडल पदिनेट कत्तरिन बीड़े मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे अक्कीरमंगलाल मनिदर यावरो अवर मगिमय एलंदारगल अक्कीरमंगलाल मनिदर यावरो अवर मगिमय एलंदारगल देव मगिमय नामु मडय देव मगिमय नामु मडय अण्डवर एसुवे बलियाना कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे किरुबै सक्यों निरैंदवरा पित्सनाम इराई वाल्दा किरुबै सक्यों निरैंदवरा पित्सनाम इराई वाल्दा पिताविन मगिमय कुमारन यसुवे पिताविन मगिमय कुमारन यसुवे आवियन कंगलाल नापरणो कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तर भीत्ते कट्टु गिरा दिवनुल्लन आई कट्टु गिरा दिवनुल्लन कत्तरिना कत्तरिन मगिमय निक्सामो निलैक्क कत्तरिन मगिमय निक्सामो निलैक्क नित्यति मानमाकिना कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे समाधानेत्तीन प्राजन कट्टु गिरा अलगल वंद्रो मधिरा समाधानेत्तीन प्राजन कट्टु गिरा अलगल वंद्रो मधिरा निरय बलित्ते निलस्ते कोणता निरय बलित्ते निलस्ते कोणता करणयुल्लव पिरियमदे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे पिरिंदु वंद तम्गनंगला निलय निरुत्तिना रस्ती वर पिरिंदु वंद तम्गनंगला निलय निरुत्तिना रस्ती वर क्रचित्तिन जीवियन साट्टी गलिना क्रचित्तिन जीवियन साट्टी गलिना कत्तगर्मीत्ते कट्टु गिरा कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे सिंकासनत्तीमेल विक्तिरुप पवरे सत्तानिन कॉरिंग केल नसुक्वा सिंकासनत्तीमेल विक्तिरुप पवरे सत्तानिन कॉरिंग केल नसुक्वा पुरन जयमो आत्वरिक ओढो पुरन जयमो आत्वरिक ओढो प्रकाशित देता आलयत्ते कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े मोड़िवड़या परमाक्कीनी इरंगित्ते कत्तरिन बीड़े मोड़िवड़या परमाक्कीनी इरंगित्ते असुक्संग आवयो पुरम्बाकिनदे असुक्संग आवयो पुरम्बाकिनदे अवर मगिमयाल निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे कत्तरिन बीड़े अवर मगिमयाल परिबुरनमा निरैंददे पदिनारा पदिनाम्ग 14 सॉन्ग नंबर 14 यसु येच्चै पण्डे देव पोत्तिर रोमाने परमानंद नमेसमदान जयत्तिन वेल्वय आवाणे परमानंद नमेसमदान जयत्तिन वेल्वय आवाणे निसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे पिताविन नंबै पेटे अवरोड़ रक्कुरवाने पिताविन नंबै पेटे अवरोड़ रक्कुरवाने कईयल को नीरबो पादरत्तीगणो भूइया अंगियों पेटे कईयल मो नीरमो पादरत्तीगणो भूइया अंगियों पेटे नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे अक्रमंगले मनित्ता एन नौगले उई कोडिना अक्रमंगले मनित्ता एन पावंगले कोडिना एनके दीरा इरुंदा वैगले एडुत्ते किरुबै इले आरेंदा एनके दीरा इरुंदा वैगले एडुत्ते किरुबै इले आरेंदा नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे पावतंदने निंगित्ते नान पुदिय सिरोस्तियाने पावतंदने निंगित्ते नान पुदिय सिरोस्तियाने राजनुमासारी एनुमकीनन माडुवेन वेलोया राजनुमासारी एनुमकीनन माडुवेन वेलोया नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे योलग मादै वेट परलोगत्ते सेन निडुवे योलग मादै वेट परलोगत्ते सेन निडुवे एन पदिनत्ते आसयोडे एन नौके काटिरुपे एन पदिनत्ते आसयोडे एन नौके काटिरुपे नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे नंदिसलु तिडुगे किरुबै पेटे परलोगराजी अट्टै आडेवे 22 पाडल 22 उयर्दस्तालाय तडिल्ले उन्हें एरपन्नी ना देव उयर्दस्तालाय तडिल्ले उन्हें एरपन्नी ना देव उन्हें एरपन्नी ना देव उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल मरणत्ते विलंगिनारे माजयत्तयु माडेंदारे मरणत्ते विलंगिनारे माजयत्तयु माडेंदारे मरणत्तिन कोरयो मोडैक्कारे मरणत्तिन कोरयो मोडैक्कारे उन्हें एरपन्नी ना देव उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल आ वनपु वायिंदा वैगल उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल ओरो दिमान दुडने उमै पात्ते कोणदवने ओरो दिमान दुडने उमै पात्ते कोणदवने ओमय नाम दिये रुपदाल्दा समाधान तुडंकापी समाधान तुडंकापी ओमय नाम दिये रुपदाल्दा समाधान तुडंकापी समाधान तुडंकापी उन्हें एरपन्नी ना देव उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल आ वनपु वायिंदा वैगल उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल आ वनपु वायिंदा वैगल आलो सनै इने अवराज्य मानवरे आलो सनै इने अवराज्य मानवरे सैयली मागत्तुव मानवरे बयमिन्दी नड़त्तुवारे बयमिन्दी नड़त्तुवारे सैयली मागत्तुव मानवरे बयमिन्दी नड़त्तुवारे बयमिन्दी नड़त्तुवारे उन्हें एरपन्नी ना देव उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल आ वनपु वायिंदा वैगल उनके काटिडम रचित्तिन सिगरंगल वनपु वायिंदा वैगल आ वनपु वायिंदा वैगल वड़ुमन दुडयो कुत्ती मान्दर आयिरवा वड़ुमन दुडयो कुत्ती मान्दर आयिरवा Valugum manadudayum putthi mantharayilva Uyirindasthalakalilme unnae eera pannina deva Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal Valaburan sayumbo dono irathu muram sayumbo dono Valaburan sayumbo dono irathu muram sayumbo dono Vali iduvayidinadavunna enbadu vaathayal keekappadu Ah vaathayal keekappadu Vali iduvayidinadavunna enbadu vaathayal keekappadu Vaathayal keekappadu Uyirindasthalakalilme unnae eera pannina deva Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal Uyirindasthalakalilme unnae eera pannina deva Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ayimai porundinavara kanthal rajaavikaano Ayimai porundinavara kanthal rajaavikaano Uyirindasthalakalilme unnae eera pannina deva Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal Unakkikkaathidum rachippin sigarangal vanappu vaiththa vaygal Ah vanappu vaiththa vaygal
I love feeling sleepy I think after a very good meal
Nella eva aagaratikuppatu padu namalaarkum oru nittharamaiyakamrakrathu
We are turning to the book of Hebrews and chapter 12 and verses 1 and 2 we are reading
Ebruere, 12th madigaram, mudal irundu vasnangali vasikaro
My dear brother will read it, Hebrews chapter 12, verses 1 and 2
Ebruere, 12th madigaram, 12 vasnangal, agi aal mekam purna ettanai thalanaana saachigal namaisuundukundarikke Baharamana yaavatthiyum namaisutti nerunginakindra paavaththiyum talibittu Viswasaaththi thookakaravarum mudukkarumaiyirukkara Esuva inoki namakkenaemithirukkara othathil porumayode odakadavum Avar tamakmun vaitthirindha sandoshathan poruttu avamanahten namal Siluvayi sagithu devanudiyasingasanaathin baladu barsathil vittukkara
Shall we look to the Lord for His grace?
Kathre nokeya avada kiruvai kaajjavikalaa
My loving heavenly Father, in the exalted name of Lord Jesus Christ, which is above every name, unite our hearts in Thy holy sanctuary with worship, thanksgiving, and adoration this afternoon
Engal anbulapalu pidave elanaamathukum melana namathikkunde engal andhavragi Esu Krusavi namathle Engal irudengale orunginathu umadiparshutha parvathathalirundu andhavraye umai thudikkurum sthotirikkurum vaartikaro
Thank Thee for the sacrificial labor of many, many, and because of which we can come into the enjoyment of the word of God this afternoon
Andhavraye anegar thiyagathodu kuda segiranda paninamithamaake namalukuda deva vaartinudiyae Deva vaarthe anubhavike namalukudi varai edavaiyirukkara nandiseltikaro
We thank Thee, Lord, for the Jehovah Shalom Church here, and thank Thee for those who are gone before us who have worked
Ego Shalom churchikaaga naan nandiseltikaro engalakum unbagai irundu panisidhi kadandu pune kathodha plegalakaamkuda naan nandiseltikaro
We remember my dear brother Abraham James, who is in glory, and also the others who are continuing, Sister Chelathai, and the Ina Minavamis still laboring in the house of God
Engalakum unbagi panisidhi son Abraham James kaaga naan nandiseltikaro Avarukuda amadhamiile ipodu kuda irukkara, adhebula andhavraye sorry Chelathai kaamkuda nandiseltikaro Ividamai andhavraye ipodu kuda panisayi kuda oru kakaamkuda naan nandiseltikaro
And brother Israel and sister Grace, and also their children Jacob and Joshua, and I brother Isaac and sister Mercy, and the children Lord Jemima and Johanna
Anbul andhavraye son Israel kaage sorry Grace kaage avada plegal kaage Adhebula son Isaac kaage sorry Mercy kaage avada plegal kaage javikaro
Lord, the work may continue and the world reward and the world... Lord bless these gatherings and bless these dear ones who have contributed much to the Lord's work
Andhavraye indhu udiyamanaadu thodundhu narayperavum andhavraye adhebula matthu ividamai andhavraye Udiyathle vataasiyaayirukkudu yaavaryum nidaami aasiravikkuva namajavikaro
When the dear ones who are standing with them, laboring night and day, many of them, though their names we know, the time does not permit us to tell their names, we are grateful to Thee for every one of their labor
Andhavraye avaluodu kuda tholkuduthanirukkudu yaavarkakaamkuda naan nandiseltikaro Yeruvum pagalaga avulukuda panisidhaga Andhavraye kaalam anamadikadanale avarulippeelalama namal arindukulla mudiyavale Anaalukuda avulakaamkuda nandiselti umai sthotirikkaro
On this afternoon, we come before Thee humbling ourselves that they will speak to us. We are needy people
Andhavraye indhu madhyavellalukuda engalakkaati umadakarthal opukudukkaro namal teevuulla janganalingalukkudu kuda pesiyallum
The time is difficult because it's afternoon session, but in spite of the difficulty, they will quicken us with Thy quickening touch, and we may be able to be fresh, listening to Thy word, grasping it, and also bearing fruit in our life towards the word of God
Andhavraye madhyenaram kadinaamaanu oru neram anaalukuda devareer umadhitthudhal Andhavraye tandhu nidaameengaliputhupitharule umadvaartigalinaale Vaartigal andhavraye engalukulivairkulavum adhukani kudukkunni udhaisiyanal javikaro
When we pray with thanksgiving and praying for both of us, for the power of the Holy Spirit and for the word from Thy loving heart without loss or leakage, giving Thee all the glory, we pray in the name of Lord Jesus Christ
Engal irubirakaamkuda javikaro parasutthavayanudhi valamai kaage venndikulukaro Umadhi anbulirudithalindhu porupadukkara vaartigalil untrum kasivu edapu perapadavadi Kaathurle umake sagala ganamu magimintudhim seluthi Esu Krusavi namathle javikaro naalapidave, amen
We have been considering from the book of Hebrews chapters 11 and 12
Ebruere, 11th madigaram, 12th adigarathle naam thodadukaro
In chapters 11 and 12, in chapter 11, we find looking unto Jesus
12th madigarathle Esuva inoki endu naam parkaro, 11th 12th le
And 11, looking unto Jesus
11th madigarathle Esuva inoki endu parkaro
Looking unto Jesus, many people, and many of them whole testament characters, they ran their race
Esuva inoki indhu padayarpattu nabargal thangalade othaththai odi mudithargal
The faith they had later on finishes with the faith of the Lord Jesus Christ in the great suffering with the faith of glorification
Engay avulade andhu viswasa othamanaadu andhavragi Esu Krusavi odu kuda Avarthamae paadubattu magimayadindhadu kuda adhenerivepparukkare
And now we are considering about Abraham
Ipodi abramakuritha naam parkaro
And his race, his lap of race, the stage in the race, is the lap of race of faith unto obedience and to God's will
Avadhi othaththulu andhu sutthanaadu viswasa thodu kuda deva sitthaththi sitthaththi kikirupadikrathakana oru othamaiyirukkare
Somebody said like this
Oruvaru ividamai sannar
Doing God's will is taking our step in the dark, not knowing where to place our feet
Deva sitthaththi seevadhanbadu irittile namadikaalai engge veykuruamindhu ariyamal munveippadu
Abraham did not know many things
Abrahamuk anegakaringal teriavale
God did not explain to him, and his questions were not answered, he did not ask also questions, but God, without telling Abraham all the details, He took him, and He obeyed, and obeyed not knowing many things
Kathre ividamai thansayapogarathelavatthiyum abramuk velipaduthavale Abram keelvikekkevale avada keelvikalakalam badhilamindhalale anaalukuda viswasaathil abram munnerichenda
And he was staying in a very good place called the Ur, which was civilisationally forward and also economically a wonderful place to live in luxury, in money, but God called Abraham to come out of Ur
Avar urinngindra oru vasidiana nagarigam nerindhu oru pattnathle avar vasamaninara rangi puruladharathle selipirundhu Ipayapattu oru pattnathalirundu kathartaami avar adhitthu vediyavara sannar
And if you have to leave a very comfortable place, and go to some place, we would ask the first question, how is the place where I have to go?
Oru vasidiana adhitthu vittu veeroradhitthukka namanupappadumode namkeekkara mudal keelvi andhaidham pogarandhaidham ipayapattadu
How many rooms are there and how many comforts are there?
Etthanae aregalirukkare, yavluva saugaringalirukkare endukeepo
Do I have AC, air condition?
AC irukkarda?
And do I have various other facilities, the place where I go?
Naan pogarandhaidhatle nalla saugaringalallam irukkarda endukeepo
But here Abraham and God called him from a very advanced place, called him to come out, not telling him where he has to go
Aga oru munneriyadu oru adhatleirundu ingi abrami devan veliyavara soli thans pogarandham innadendru avanai adhakara
And we praise God, praise Abraham for his faith in so many ways
Anegakaringlele abramuk irundha viswasaathikaayi namkathre is sthotirikkaro
We call him as father of faith
Viswasiyilintagappanendu solukaro
And we have many times speak about him and many times we would have given messages about him
Anegasandrapangalele avare kurithu pesi avare kurithu seedyikodu kudukaro
But he had so many defects, so many defects
Anaalavarku neriyeh paadangal avadhitthalirundhu
And he did not have all the plus points
Avadhitthale allam sadagamana amshangalirukavale, elasadha amshangal
So many failures in his life
Avadhi vaarkal anegak tholvikalirundhu
He was like you and me
Ungalai anye pulaadhaanavarundha
And but still God, when he wrote about him, taking more than one-third of the space in the role called of honor of heroes of faith in Hebrews chapter 11, he never mentioned about the lack, about the failure in Abraham
Aga Abraham, Ebruere, 11th madigarathle viswasa veerigalodhi patthiylile avaruk oru nalavu oru pradhanidhatthi kuduthu Avadhi vaarkalulla korivakalai avar sutthikaattamale avare kurithu edhidiyirukkara
Abraham's portion is around one-third of the whole thing
Andhavramakuritha andhu kuripanaadu moondilorupangu indhu Ebruere 11th madigarathle irukkare
Many great heroes, only their names are mentioned, and many great names, they are not mentioned at all
Periyaviswasa veerigalodhi peergalmaatharana oru sellarodhi peergalmaatharana solappadukkare Palarodhi peergalukuda solappadavale
But still, we just think that God has reason for not telling Abraham's failure, because when God tells about us, He forgets our failures and looks at what we have accomplished for Him and where we have obeyed Him, honored Him
Aga abramakurithu solumbode avadhi tholvikalai kurithu salaadu irukkumode Devan ividamai namadhi tholvikalai marakavaraaga andhavarkakaaganaam sadhitthavakalai seedyavakalai solakkudiyavaraaga kanaupadukkara
Now we are telling without asking where he was going, not knowing where he went
Na thans pogaradham innadendhu ariyamal avar porupattupponaandhi namari kurithu solukaro
Do you know there was a failure there?
Adhale oru tholviirundhu namak teriama?
What did God tell him?
Devan namadhitle enesannar
You go leaving your father, your kindred, and your country
Unenathiyum unthagappanvittiyum undesaththi vittuporupattupoyindhu andhavranadhitle solirundha
He left the place, Ur
Avan uravittuppona
But he did not leave his father
Avan thantagappanaviddavale
And he did not leave even his nephew, Lot
Thantan enathanaagya lotthuvayukuda viddavale
He took with them
Avanayum oru kuda kundupogara
God did not tell him to take them
Avale kuttikundupogumbedi andhavaraavu kusolavale
But Abraham disobeyed only partially
Andhavay, abram, andhavarki ividamai
Partially
Kunchamaga thans kilpadiindha
Not fully
Muluvudamai kilpadiavale
But God was gracious, not mentioning all the failures, He only mentioned he went not knowing whether he went
Abramadhi tholvikal elavatthiyum avar kuripidamal thans pogaradham innadendhu ariyamal porupattupponaandhi avanim echchi solukaro
Beloved, what we are trying to say is not recommending we can have failures, but I was just highlighting how God is able to forget our failures but still chooses us, still wants to guide us, still wants to bless us, still wants to make us a blessing
Aga nam solukkara kariyamennavindhal devan namadhi tholvikalai marandhu thodundhu namay avar aasiravikke namay nadathte namay Namay munnerithu selle avar virmukkara
And we are turning to the book of Hebrews and chapter 11
Ebruere, 11th madigaram
Verses 8 to 10 we are reading
8th lundhu 10 vasnangale naam vasikaro
Verses 8 to 10
8th lundhu 10 Viswasaathnalae abram thans suundaramaga perapogaradhatthi kupogumbedi adhikappattupode Kirupadindhu thans pogamidham innadendhu ariyamal porupattuppona Viswasaathnalae avan vaakathathampanappattu desathle pradeshiyapola sanjerithu Andhavaakathaththikku udansundraraga Isaakodum YaakkoBodum koodaarangalele kudiyirundhaan Eninil devantamai katti undakkinan astiwarangalulla nagaraththi kavankathirundhaan
So here we find that when he went, without knowing where he was going, he went
Avan kirupadindhu thans pogamidham innadendhu ariyamal porupattuppona
And this is the first kind of faith Abraham had, not knowing where he was going, when God called him to an unknown place, he obeyed, obeyed and did the will of God, and he went
Aga devan thans ariyadavu desaththikku avar adhitthapode avan kirupadindhu thans pogaradham innadendhu ariyamal porupattuppona
What we come to know is the family of Abraham is a very prosperous family and also they were famous people in the Ur of Chaldees
Engay kaldeenudhi urinngirapattnatle abramadhi kodumbaththa mega presithipetavakal mega sedipanaavargal
So many people would have asked him
Anegaravani parthikkeethu paragai
Abraham, where are you going?
Abraham, engge pogarai
Abraham would have said, "I don't know"
Abraham soliruppari nekthiriada
And God then they would have told him, "Please go and get admitted in mental hospital"
Avanadhitle soliruppargal nikpoi oru mananallamarthumani le shernukul
And where you are going, he don't know, but still you are leaving everything and going
Enge pogaraiendhu ariyamal elavatthi vittu ni pogaraiye
And you must be mad. And some others would have begged him. And please don't go. Emotionally something happened to you. You think some god has spoken. It must be imagination. Please come back to your senses. And without you, how can we live in this place? Some would have threatened him, some would have pleaded with him and many people would have told him not to go. But abraham knew that the foundation of god is sure and when god calls, he has already prepared the place for him and it is god who is taking, so he followed. And this is how we find abraham exceeding in faith among the heroes of faith and given prominence. Now we want to read the next passage. And that is in same hebrews chapter eleven please. Verses thirteen to sixteen. Not knowing what. And the words thirteen to sixteen we are reading. Responsively please, brother will read and the next verse he will read like that. They are moving away from the city. Here we find how this abraham was obeying god not knowing what. What harm in living in a very good place, very good house and strong house and well-built house? Why he should go like a pilgrim? Tent after tent. And it was not at all understandable. And he did not know what he was doing. He knew one thing. He knew god was guiding him. God says where to dwell and what to do, how to do, all that I will do without asking questions. Later on you find beloved. Abraham was standing on his tent's door. When the three people came. Lord jesus christ and two angels. And they spoke about sarah and how she will have a son and all those promises. In the eighteen chapter of genesis. And there we find the angels, two angels and lord jesus christ visiting abraham. But when they went to meet lord. Only two people went. Lord jesus christ never went. The only reason beloved is. Abraham, he kept the quality of a pilgrim. He was a stranger in this earth. He was looking for a permanent city that has foundations. And which is real, which is eternal. And he knows what all the world offers are temporal and is perishing. So he was living in a like a pilgrim and god honored him, lord jesus visited him and then lord jesus even stood with him when abraham spoke to the lord, lord jesus christ pleading for his nephew, for his lot. And at that time, lord jesus christ was standing and listening. So if we have the mind of a pilgrim, we have the favor of god and god honors our faith to not asking what but obeying him. But at the same time. If you want to know about lot. Lot lived in a house with doors and posts and with all good construction. Please see both the difference. Genesis. Chapter eighteen. First one. Genesis eighteen one. Tent door. Then again we are reading genesis nineteen and verse four. There is, there was a house there and in the house this man lot was living, not a tent. Please note the difference, there was all safety in the tent but no safety in that house. Where god guides us, there is safety, there is success and there is peace and there is also protection but not where we plan and we do. Here we find abraham went not knowing what, why, what is the meaning of living in a tent? And then not knowing why. And then not knowing why. Words seventeen to nineteen of genesis, I am sorry of hebrews chapter eleven. Not knowing why. And it was a very great test. God did not explain to him. Why god was asking for all this? And we are reading from verse seventeen up to verse nineteen of hebrews eleven. And if you have to believe a very comfortable place and go to some place, we would ask the first question, how is the place where I have to go? How many rooms are there and how many comforts are there? Do I have ac air condition? And do I have various other facilities, the place where I go? But here abraham and god called him from a very advanced place, called him to come out, not telling him where he has to go. And we praise god, praise abraham for his faith in so many ways. He had faith. I believe, it is my belief that he had the faith on the promise of god. We may think that god is able to raise him up again, that is true. There is one side. Already god promised in isaac shall the seed be called and the whole world will be filled with the people of god in isaac's lineage. And so here he did not refuse god's order to go and obey him by offering his son isaac, so not knowing why he obeyed god. True faith will always be tested. Many of my friends used to say. We want to keep god always at a distance. If we go far away, he will not help us. If we go very near him, he will tempt us. True faith if it is there, true faith to prove it is true faith, it will be always tested. Whatever it is, true faith of abraham was tested but abraham knew that isaac will live and he bravely he went on to offer isaac. And we want to read these words. Twenty first chapter, twelve words. Here we find the promise in isaac shall thy seed be called, isaac will come to thy age, get married, bigger children and they will be like the sand of the sea. We have come for this meeting. Before we go away from this meeting. I want to request you one thing. And you have the bible, all of you. But I read the bible. Believe the bible. Claim the promises. And live a wonderful life. Life of victory. Life of blessing. And not simply having the bible and not reading it, not knowing what god is speaking to you. We are talking about abraham's faith to obey god. And then for that he had to have faith. And the faith had to depend upon god's word. Here god's word told abraham in sarah shall thy seed be called. So abraham when he went, he was assured whatever happened, whether he is going to kill isaac or not kill isaac according to the promise of god, I will come back with my son and my son would be living even after whether the sacrifice is done or not done, my son would be coming. We find in the later chapters when he told the servants, he said, we be here and the lad and myself will go yonder, we will worship the lord and come back and there he says, my son and myself, both of us will come back. It is not the white lie like many of us speak white lies. And he believed, believed his son is going to come back. Because his faith was on god's word. And god's word very definitely told years ago that is, that isaac would be promoting the seed of abraham. I am begging those believers, I am begging the believers here. Please spend time with god's word on daily basis regularly. And at least read, now I am showing my booty, at least read ten chapters a day. If you read ten chapters a day. In thirty-four years you will read it, you will read it hundred times. And many people of god, they read the bible in their lifetime more than hundred times. Same way brother george mueller. Great men of god, great women, women of god who did great things for god, they gave time for god's word and they became strong and did great things. When abraham went to the mount moriah to sacrifice isaac. Abraham was hundred and eighteen years old. And isaac was eighteen years old. Hundred years difference. And isaac was a virile strong man. And abraham would have thought suppose isaac again retorted and pushed me on the altar and killed me, what would happen? But this isaac, a virile young man, he like quietly, he was like a lamb, he was falling on the altar. As you learn to obey god's voice, god's will, god will not allow anything strange to happen, everything happens for our good. And then as i told you, abraham told the servants. And that happened. Book of genesis. Chapter twenty-two please. And verse five. Genesis twenty-two five. He said, you be here and I will go and come back. So his faith was the faith unto obeying god's word, paying the price and abraham was tested and his faith was proved. And not knowing when the last lastest. And the time factor was not told abraham. This is in different stages in abraham's life. In different ways he was tested. Finally, not knowing when. Verses eleven and twelve of chapter eleven of hebrews. And here we find that not knowing. And here we find that, not knowing when he will get a child, he wanted to wait for God's will. Two years gone. You are standing before the mirror. Lines are coming on his face. And he is shivering a little. Five years gone. Ten years gone. And his feet are stumbling, stumbling sometimes. Hope of getting a child is going. Then comes Sarah to help. See, God has given the wives to help the husband. Many of the families I know and in my family. And the wives actually are good counselors. They will stop us from doing wrong. And they will tell us and help us to walk in the ways of God. But in the case of Abraham. Over Sarah, he made a mistake. And God promised that he would give a son. Then he had a suggestion. Already my husband is becoming so old. And some more time lapsing, what would happen to him? My slave is here. Let him marry my slave Hagar. And through her, let him have a son. That means. God has purposely closed the womb of Sarah. Way to mend it. And indirectly, she was finding fault with God. And so he went, she went to Abraham. She said, first of all. And in, in the, in the, in the words we read, she said, "The Lord hath withheld me from bearing a child." And whom he is blaming? All doubt to disobey God, going against the will of God, starts with blaming God. She started saying, "Now God has withheld me and God has stopped my womb and God has prevented me from having a child." My dear brother, my dear sister, anytime if the thought comes to you, say, "You get off devil, I don't want to listen to you." And that is from the devil. There is, there is nobody so good as the Lord. Nobody as loving as the Lord. And nobody who feels for us, feels with us and nobody is, who is longing to bless us like our God. After testing him for the past years, I don't want to tell the years, he will calculate my age. So many years I have tested, after testing him, there is nobody like him. And then this lady, first of all, started blaming. The Lord hath restrained me. Uncertainty. Uncertainty. When we find fault with God, second thing is lack of faith, no faith. Nothing we know in certain. Everything is doubtful. This lady also was uncertain. This lady was also doubtful. She says. It may be. When God says. It is, it surely is. But when, when the devil is working. It may be. Sarah has listened to the liar, the devil, and she says, "It may be my servant will bear a child for you." Thirdly. Legally right. Are you listening, beloved? Especially many of you are grown up people with responsibilities. Why this interval means not old people, people who are come, come to take decisions and run your business, run your things. And we should remember one thing. It is not only important things must be legal. We cannot base our decision thinking whether it is legal or not, but we base our decision thinking whether it is spiritual or not. Why we say legal? In those days, there was a law in that country. Law of Amurabi, law, that is code of Amurabi. Of Amurabi. Amurabi, because we should know what are, what are the laws were there in previous days. We are talking history, we are not talking story. And the Lord was existing at the time of Sarah and Abraham. According to the code of Amurabi, section hundred and forty-four. Hundred and forty-four. Why we are telling this? We are not telling this not to show that we are, we are knowing all this. Everything based on legality this lady acted. Everything based on legality. And then she took the decision according to legality, not spirituality. What was, what was hundred and forty-four? Whole code of Amurabi, section hundred and forty-four. Said like this. If the mistress doesn't have a child, she can have a servant who can bear a child for her. And the child will have all the rights of the, of the own, own, own son or own son. Sarah was an educated woman, must be. And she was quoting the law. Three things. And first of all. When she was talking to him, she was blaming God. The Lord hath restrained me. And secondly. And she said, uncertainly, "It may, it may be I may get a son through my servant." That is not sure. Thirdly. Legal rather than spiritual. God was working his plan in various ways. He was preparing Abraham. He was waiting for the time when his faith would be mature enough. But listening to Sarai. Abraham readily disobeyed God and then went and married Hagar and got a child. What a pity. And same Sarai later on went to Abraham. After I, after this, the child to Hagar was born. And Sarai had, had, had a son called Isaac. When both the sons were fighting. Then Sarai said, "Now leave the bond woman and her son and send them away." And Abraham ran to God. Abraham ran to God. Lord, now, now it is, it is grievous for me, what, what Sarai says. God said. Listen to Sarah. Ironically, it can be taken. Ironically means, whatever, whatever. I am also not able to get the meaning for ironical. Slave, a one more. And he says, God says, tells Abraham, "Listen, listen to Sarah." You know the meaning? One meaning is. Without asking me, you married Hagar. Listening to Sarah. Now, when the things are happening, all this. Problems and division in the family. You listen to her. You should have asked me and married and without that, you married, listening to Sarah, now again you listen to Sarah. But God later on helped him. Though we put on the face of God, ten times, all the ashes, all the dirt on his face and sin against him and fail him, still he will come back and help us. There is nobody like our Lord Jesus Christ. And here we find about Abraham. And he, not knowing when, he obeyed him. Till he was hundred years old, he was waiting. Now the time is up. We want to finish. But we want to add a few things. And that is the choice of faith for the people in Hebrews chapter eleven. And about, in verses thirty-three and thirty-four. We find, no, no, please don't read. All the heroes of faith, we, we are not able to meditate. We want to just mention. And we find Abel. The meaning of Abel is breath, breath, there is a moochi. When do we start breathing spiritually? When we believe on the shed blood of the Lord Jesus Christ to forgive us and to cleanse us and to make a God's child. And we dedicate, offering the best and the fattest. Salvation and submission. And Enoch. The meaning is dedicated. The faith is faith unto salvation. And then we find Nova. Nova means rest. And it is communion and communication. Nova was walking with God. Nova could hear God. And Nova, he could talk to God like friend with friend. So he was, he was actually Nova was a man who was, who was, who was, the meaning of Nova is rest. And he had communion with God. And he was communicating, giving God's message to others for God. And Abraham. The meaning is father of nations. And he was obedient to God's will. And then we find again. You find Isaac. The meaning of Isaac is laughter. And his faith is imparting faith. And he imparted blessing to his grand, grandchild Jacob. Though he was, though he was about to commit a mistake. And only Jacob was actually worthy to, worthy to receive the blessing. Not Esau. Why? What is the reason? Because his soul is birthday. That may be a very big mistake. That is not the reason. Three times in the Old Testament, the first bond was rejected and the second bond was chosen. On what basis? Because the first birth was rejected and the second birth was selected and that is in your life and my life. What God would do in later years in the New Testament times, he was showing in the Old Testament times. And it was already published by God, "I am going to reject your first birth. You may be greatly educated and highly salaried and wonderfully you may be forward in life, prosperous in life. I reject all that belongs to the first birth." And I choose only the second birth, the salvation experience, rebirth. So that is why he did not allow Isaac to be blessed, but Jacob to be blessed. This is one of the places where God was enacting what he was going to do in the New Testament. And he, he has blessed the second birth in our life. Are you born again? Do you have the second birth? Or are you only happy with your first birth and the blessings in your first birth, of your education, your wisdom and your status and so on? You need not do anything. Come as you are. Come confessing to the Lord Jesus Christ. Come repenting. Repentance means not giving up everything. Willing to turn away from your old way of life. And become believing. The Lord Jesus Christ's blood can cleanse me and make me a new creature. Then the Lord will do a miracle of rebirth, second birth. Please, please don't go away from this meeting without the experience of second birth. And then we find. About Joseph. That is adding means increase. The meaning of Joseph is adding. Or increase. And then we find this, this Joseph is noted for faith which is far sighted faith. Moses' faith. Enlarged and exalted faith and glorifying Jehovah. I am sorry, not Moses'. Moses' parents. Exalted faith. Ordinary people. But their, their names are included in the heroes of faith. And because they could protect this Moses and waited for the day when the Lord would save Israel through Moses. Moses' choices in his life.
When you say something.
What is Moses' faith?
When you say something.
Choosing faith.
When you say something.
Moses had correct choices in his life.
When you say something.
When we look at the Lord Jesus Christ.
When you say something.
The Lord Jesus Christ always had the cross before him.
When you say something.
In Hebrews.
In Hebrews.
And verse twelve, verse two.
In Hebrews.
Looking unto Jesus, the author and finisher of our faith, before him endured the cross, despising the shame and the shame and this sat down at the right hand of the throne of God.
When you say something. When you say something.
Despising the shame.
When you say something.
And this, and she, and he endured the cross.
When you say something.
Without the cross, there is no crown.
When you say something.
And that is why here we find Lord Jesus Christ is reminding you, reminding me, that whatever suffering Lord Jesus Christ allows in our life is for our glorification.
When you say something.
Glorification in this world.
When you say something.
And glorification in the world to come.
When you say something.
Please, can you, you know, if you read a book of Isaiah chapter sixty-one, verse seven.
When you say something.
Isaiah sixty-one, seven, please.
When you say something.
Anybody can read it. Where we have been put to shame, whether in our office or in our neighborhood or in our family or in our ministry, where we have been put to shame, there the Lord will give us double fame.
When you say something. When you say something.
Dear child of God, don't be weeping and don't be feeling sad, you claim the promise, God will do it for you.
When you say something.
In my life and in others' life, we have claimed this promise, Lord, in the same place where we have been put to shame. Give us double fame, double name and fame.
When you say something.
A friend of mine was in a very high post in Hyderabad.
When you say something.
And suddenly somebody reported to the police and the, and the government officials.
When you say something.
And he has got money which is not accounted.
When you say something.
Then people came and they were, they were examining all the, all the things in his house.
When you say something.
This man was highly educated.
When you say something.
In a very high post.
When you say something.
With a good salary.
When you say something.
Attending, attending Hebron in Hyderabad.
When you say something.
He was heartbroken.
When you say something.
What a shame.
When you say something.
Then I told him this promise.
When you say something.
Daily both of us prayed.
When you say something.
Very soon the things changed.
When you say something.
And they found out he is not to be blamed, he is, he is innocent.
When you say something.
What all high post they offered him.
When you say something.
What honor came upon him.
When you say something.
Later on, of course, he resigned the job and went to some other company with better special facilities.
When you say something.
With better facilities.
When you say something.
Now he is in the church ministry and he is retired.
When you say something.
He is retired.
When you say something.
God will not let you down, others will let you down like Sunday class song, he will not let you down.
When you say something.
So both in this world.
When you say something.
And in the world to come.
When you say something.
According to our suffering, he will glorify us.
When you say something.
We want to read some more verses.
When you say something.
Numbers, chapter fourteen, verse nine.
When you say something.
Numbers fourteen, nine.
When you say something.
Our enemies are bread for us.
When you say something.
In Tamil, it is not very foreseeable, in English it is foreseeable.
When you say something.
And the more enemy is more bread.
When you say something.
More bread, more strength.
When you say something.
Many times we think our enemies means weakness for us.
When you say something.
God allows enemies to strengthen us, not to weaken us.
When you say something.
Opposition means opportunity.
When you say something.
One Corinthians.
When you say something.
Chapter sixteen.
When you say something.
Verse nine.
When you say something.
One Corinthians.
One.
See, both go together.
When you say something.
What are the two?
When you say something.
Read again.
When you say something.
So the great and effectual door is open.
When you say something.
Read again. And there are many adversaries.
When you say something.
It will be always there throughout your life.
When you say something.
Enemies will be there.
When you say something.
Great and effectual door will be there.
When you say something.
Have your eyes on the great and effectual door, not on your enemies.
When you say something.
And again we want to read, finally one word, many words are there.
When you say something.
And that, that word is from, is from Psalm sixty-six, verse twelve.
When you say something.
Psalm sixty-six, verse twelve.
When you say something.
So if you want to come to a prosperous place.
When you say something.
God may take us through various difficulties.
When you say something.
Uses us as doormat.
When you say something.
Why God is loving?
When you say something.
Is God sleeping?
When you say something.
Does not he care?
When you say something.
He cares, dear child of God.
When you say something.
He wants to exalt you.
When you say something.
And he wants to bring you to a prosperous place.
When you say something.
Don't lose faith.
When you say something.
God will be wonderful.
When you say something.
And the faith of Lord Jesus Christ, he was not despising shame and he bore the cross and cross was heaven and because of the suffering, he was glorified and because of our suffering, he will lead us to glory.
When you say something. When you say something.
There is not doubt his love.
When you say something.
Let us praise him.
When you say something.
More and more love him, more and more serve him.
When you say something.
Love him only, Father, we commit thy precious word into thy loving hand.
When you say something.
Water it, preserve it, make it bring forth much fruit.
When you say something.
Bless every brother, every sister, every young woman and young, young man and every child.
When you say something.
Answer every question.
When you say something.
Heal every disease.
When you say something.
Make their face shine upon them.
When you say something.
With what burden they came, let them leave the burden here and go rejoicing.
When you say something.
Blessing may rest upon everyone.
When you say something.
Upon the great work of God here also.
When you say something.
And continue to be with us.
When you say something.
We pray in the name of our Lord and Savior Lord Jesus Christ.
When you say something. Good morning. The morning church has finished. The church is closing. The church closes at seven o'clock. The church closes at ten o'clock. In any case, in this case. I am asking you to come to me. The church closes at eleven o'clock. The church closes at eleven o'clock. In any case, in this case. I am asking you to come to me. The church closes at nine o'clock. I am asking you to come to me. Good morning, good morning. Good morning. The church has joined us. 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 The church closes at four o'clock. 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 I have finished my part. I remember my father. I have a brother. 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 I have a brother.[1568.72]